Free remarks. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CBWD's Coachella office and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district board members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda. The meeting is streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. Do we, do we know if Director Aguilar will be?
Yes, I'm sorry. Director Aguilar will be joining us, and he is online via Zoom.
Okay, good. All right, so I'll make sure to call on Director Aguilar specifically as items come up, so that we know that he has an opportunity to participate, and everything will be as a roll call votes. I think that covers it. Okay, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. In roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
Thank you. Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Are we aware of any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir.
No, I don't have any. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment at this time?
I don't see any in the audience.
I do not have any members online, Mr. President.
Okay. Just us, huh? Let's see, 5A.
My president.
We have, right, we have two anniversaries. Mike Garcia, 35 years, and David McGee, 20 years. They're not here, but there was a nice write-up for David McGee if you wanted to peruse that in the packet and online. So, congratulations on their milestones. Let's see, consent calendar, 6A through N. Oh, I have, what did I have here? 6H.
I was gonna pull 6H.
8?
Yeah, might as well pull it. Let's pull 6H.
Let's pull 6H. All right, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
So move, second?
Okay, and I just want to make sure that Director Aguilar is able to be heard before we vote.
Yeah, John, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So there's a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passed 5-0. Yeah, just, I mean, it just seemed a little curious, looking at 6H, one, that there was no consideration that I could make out, and two, how did that parcel get there in the first place? Why is it, you know, when we, when Big Horn or whoever they are acquired that parcel that's in yellow, they did so without access? It was, it just seems a little odd.
Yeah, it did, it did. Yeah, so I'll hear the President.
Oh, Almer, yeah, thanks.
Hi, Sir. Good morning. Assistant Director of Engineering Services and Planning.
Almer Alex, Assistant Director of Engineering Services and Planning. Oh, in 1990, we did sell that property for approximately $52,000, and it was an oversight of staff at that time that to landlock the Big Horn Golf Club. So it was an oversight that there wasn't an adjustment to the lot line for them to give that access to that wellsite.
So, I'm gonna need a little more than that. I need to know that the yellow box, who owns that? Who owns the red box? What box are we giving away? I just didn't understand.
Okay, so the lot 26, APN 26, is owned by the Big Horn Golf Club, and that was so...
So the yellow box is owned by the Big Horn?
Yeah.
The yellow box.
The yellow box.
And that's where they have a well that they use to...
So, yes.
It's not gonna be that easy, Almer. There it is.
There you go.
Okay. So, in 1990, this property was sold to Big Horn.
Okay.
With intent of allowing them access to the wellsite. However, an oversight at staff was that this was owned in fee title by CBWD, that's APN 52, and we had landlocked their access. So the $52,000 consideration was supposed to give them access also.
Oh, is that really part of the deal? I mean, why didn't we just give them an easement for access instead of granting, having to do a parcel split and...
We don't have any, any use for the property.
But we are requiring that we retain easements for our pipelines if...
Correct, correct, correct. And that's more of the standard is if we just have pipelines or facilities underground, that we just have easements for them and not have fee title land for just underground facilities.
Okay. So the reason we're not asking for cash consideration is that it was an oversight and it was supposed to be included in the original, or...
That was my understanding from 1990.
So we're gonna split that little APN, so we'll still own that, that piece to the, I guess that's to the west?
To the south here, yeah, the rest of that, yeah. We shouldn't, I mean, this is fee title, but we only have underground pipelines there. So we should not, you know, if we were doing this in today's standard, we would just have an easement for our pipes here and not own the land in fee title.
Okay. And so I'm guessing that north of the red box, those pipeline easements would continue?
It actually goes back into...
Oh, it's under the street? Okay.
It comes back underneath the street.
All right.
It's underneath that guy's wall.
I mean, is that, I guess Jeff Farai, is that kosher to be granting real property without cash consideration?
In a case like this, normally if you don't have the need for the fee title ownership, you need it only for an easement, then in order to reduce the potential for liability from owning fee, you simply take an easement. In order to convey it or to give it without consideration, you take into account what the value of it is, what the cost would be to appraise that value, and whether or not you're getting something in return that is an easement, granted, we have the fee right now. So it's not unusual for a parcel of this size not to request compensation. If it were a large piece, a valuable piece, certainly that would be a different conversation. But Almer, maybe you have some idea what the, what the value of that would have been?
There isn't much value in it because of about the actual size of it. It's not...
So it's 20, 2,400 square feet, right?
Yeah, so it goes way further down, but this is like a 12-foot wide segment, so it's really small.
So the cost of appraising and selling and negotiating a 2,400-square-foot piece, where we're give, we're getting rid of the liability of owning it in fee, that would be not considered to be a gift to public funds.
How about that, that other property to the, to the south? I got distracted for a minute, but it's one parcel, we're gonna split the parcel and, and transfer just the red box and keep, keep the part to the south?
Currently, yes. We have no plans. This is a different property owner to the, to the west.
Is that, is that public property? Is that a...
I believe this is City of Palm Desert.
It's the park, right?
Yeah, open space by the City of Palm Desert.
Yeah. I had one of my kids' birthday parties at that park, so I kind of know the area. We used to do T-ball practice at that park.
Is that right?
There used to be gra, I'm assuming there's grass underneath the part that's cut out at the, at the bottom left corner.
Looks like a hiking trail for sure. But it looked like some kind of open space with some trails.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
There's only one, one other time, and I'm sure we've, we've had other times where we, where we had to deal with surplus property, but I do recall one time specifically during the renovation of Palm View Elementary School in Coachella, there was an old wellsite right in the middle of, of the campus. And we, something that we owned, I think, for a long, long time ago. And I don't recall how we, how we took care of that, so I'll, I'll be interested to see how we, how we handled that, 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 that lot. It was a small lot for a, for a well.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't recall if there was also no cash consideration, but it might have been that we just gave it up also, but, but it might be a good thing to look at Almer just to, to see how we're consistent with what we do.
Well, considering, we do follow policy, and normally we have, you know, do an appraisal and do all that value, but the original intent, understanding in 1990, I mean, that's, it is, you know, 32 years ago was that we were supposed to get them access. So this was a clear oversight. As they were accessing the well, staff noticed that we hadn't still owned that in fee, in fee title.
If you could follow up with me on an email, just to, I'm curious now to see how we handled Palm View, just, just for reference.
Okay.
Yeah, I, to me, it, I'm not trying to soak anybody with having to pay for something, but it seems like a dangerous precedent to be giving land away.
Can I just say something?
I mean, is it really a precedent? It sounds like it. It sounds to me like it's a precedent.
This isn't a precedent, this is a very long-term issue with Big Horn. I'd say it's probably a 10-year-old issue. And there were three items that we needed, that we've been working with Big Horn on. And one was access to one of our reservoirs. There was this issue, and then there was like a sprint, a faux-rock situation with a wall, and anyways, it's been a long time coming to get to this point with them, to reach an agreement. So we're just trying to wrap it up and finalize, finalize our, our issues with Big Horn.
So what's, I mean, every contract, every, this, in order to do this, we need consideration, right? So what's the consideration? It's not cash, it's something else.
The consideration is that we don't have the liability.
Correct.
Because if we own it in fee title and Big Horn just has an easement and there's some hap, something happened, someone's injured, whatever, they can come and sue us too. So that's, that's typically why we don't want to own land in fee title when, when another entity is accessing it.
Okay.
And then Carrie, would you say you have these other issues that you're also resolving?
They've been resolved. The other two issues have been resolved, yes. This is the final issue.
This is part of a larger transaction.
It's a, it's a very long-term, larger transaction.
I mean, it's 2,400 square feet, guys.
No, it's not a lot of money, but...
But it's, it's not a lot of square footage, it's very small.
Yeah, it's probably worth $5,000. I mean, if it's, if it's...
And to do an appraisal is $5,000.
Yeah, if it's, if it's $100,000 an acre, which it probably is.
But to Carrie's point about the cost of an appraisal, which we would have to do, would be the same as the cost of property.
I know. Just trying to think of how we do this with other, I mean, if somebody else wanted to acquire some of our property, wouldn't we ask them to do an appraisal, to pay for the appraisal?
But doesn't this have a history where, where it should have been part of the original in the beginning? That, that's the whole catch to this thing, is that it should have been done in 1990. And it seems reasonable to me. I don't, I don't, I don't, it's so small.
I know, but it's just the next...
It's not like it can be commercial or it can be...
How, how much is it gonna cost to do the lot line split?
It, there is no cost. As a special district, we don't follow under the...
I'm subject to it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good. That is good. Didn't know that. All right. Director Aguilar, did you have anything before we go towards action here?
Uh, no, I'm good, John.
All right, I'll, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Carrie and Almer. We'll remember that one next time.
You'll remember that one.
Free land. Okay, 8A. This is establish an ad hoc strategic planning committee.
So I guess I will...
For those two dates.
Yes, I will start that, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
So as your word, CBWD will hold strategic planning sessions. We haven't held one in a couple of years. And this, this year, in an effort to ensure we have board participation, we're just asking that the board appoint two board members to sit in on the two full-day workshops as an ad hoc committee, and that, you know, the committee members could then report back to the board and receive direction from the full board if needed.
Okay, so would there be an opportunity for, if a third board member wanted to participate in one or both of those sessions?
We would, then, that would turn into a special meeting, and we would have to stream, Zoom, record, and so forth. And in that training room, part of the limitations is that we conduct these workshops in the training rooms, and we don't have the capability to, to do the workshops.
So the answer's no?
No.
Correct.
But, but did we do that last time? We never did that.
In the past, we did, however, under AB 361, but any meeting of the board must be tele, or must be streamed, excuse me, so we don't have the capabilities, correct?
That's the new part.
That's the new part.
So that's the same kind of thought that I had or concern was that it would exclude other members from participating if, if it happened that their schedules, you know, allowed them to participate. I, were you historically having issues getting participation from the board, or is it more of the issue with the streaming?
Um, it, it, it has varied over the years. Sometimes we have had three members or more, and in those years, we have noticed the meeting or the workshop as a special meeting. I think we did that in December of 2019, which was the last time. But again, AB 361 wasn't in place, and the requirements were much different. An alternative, if it was the desire of the full board to participate, would be that we would schedule a workshop just for the board members and conduct that as a special meeting.
And, and we did do that in the past. Unfortunately, it doesn't involve the staff members, so it's really not, I mean, it's really a presentation by the facilitator to try and get some feedback from the board, which, you know, not being involved in the process...
Well, I think the, that board participation is really important.
I really enjoyed it when we first did it. I'd forget the, the team you brought in, Jim, but the first time you did it, I think we all participated and...
Yeah, that was John Guevaras and a couple other folks.
Annette, was there?
Yeah, but that was, I really enjoyed that.
It wasn't Annette.
I really enjoyed those sessions and...
Antoinette?
Antoinette.
Antoinette, yeah.
Antoinette.
Yeah, they were good.
And I think...
Yeah, they're in England.
I'll just say, I'll just say, I, I am, I have a conflict on the 3rd of November, so if that's the date, I will not be able to attend.
So we have two, October 4th and November 3rd.
Yeah.
And they are all-day sessions from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I have conflicts as well, so I, I won't be able to attend.
And I don't, I know about Director Aguilar.
What were the dates?
October 4th and November 3rd.
November 3rd. And again, I believe in 2019, we did do a workshop with just the board and department heads. That was in early December, I believe, and that was, it was Ed Means at that time, that was the consultant that we brought in for that year. And we'll also be doing it this year.
Ed?
Ed Means.
He wasn't as fun as the other ones.
He was not. He didn't make you seem any better.
That's true.
Hey, John, President Powell?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, if I could just throw in my two cents on this. I, like you all, I've been involved in many of these planning sessions over the years, and I've found that having full board or full board participation with staff present is far more meaningful than even if they have to be noticed as a, as a public meeting, than partial, a board presentation, membership, showing up versus or doing a separate meeting. I think of there's a way to do it with as many members as possible that can show up. I think discussion of strategic issues is something that we should all be part of. So that would be my, my input.
And so, given the limitations in our technology in the training rooms, there is no way to conduct the workshops and allow for the activities that staff is involved in a, say, in a board meeting. We would have to move it into the board chambers to allow for the special meeting.
So I just want to push back a little bit on that. I mean, there is technology that can do this. I mean, it may not be installed in the room, but I mean, we could probably rent a camera that would do that. I mean, it just doesn't sound like it's that complicated.
I can't tell you how many Zoom meetings I've been to that, you know, there's, there's a, one camera on the, on the dais and all other activities going on around it.
So it's because we, well, we would have to do the video streaming, we'd have to have the audio, the mics. The cameras is probably the easiest of it, but I don't know the audio, the video, if we could do the Zoom from there as well. I'm looking at Luis just because of technology.
You all remember that it basically takes the whole 360 degrees of the room. It's not focused on one dais or one...
We have eight groups, eight tables.
No, I get it. So, so I've seen where they have a, an owl camera, and it sits in the middle, and whoever's speaking, the camera goes to the, goes to the speaker. It's pretty cool. It's called an owl camera? You probably know what it's, and it's, it's probably do a very...
I, I could ask, our vendor, if it, I mean, I could check with our vendor that currently helps us in Palm Desert to see if they, they do streaming of different events as well. They do anything from board meetings to pageants. I don't know their capability. Also, I don't know the limitation in our, in our training rooms as well as far as the audio, mics, things of that nature. It would probably take some time coordination. We might have to purchase some equipment.
I mean, clearly, we can look, if the board wants to do this by streaming, then we'll have to go look and see whether or not that's possible. What we were trying to do is avoid that with this recommendation. If this isn't gonna work, then let us go back and figure out what it will.
What, what if, what if staff had, had their meeting, and then we had a, a study session?
It's not the same.
It's not the same?
Well, that was the best one we've done before.
Because you're really developing these ideas as a team.
Yeah, no, I know, it's the direction of the district for, for the foreseeable future. I mean, a lot of things we've done here have, have come directly through that.
I bet we could hire a, a company that would just come in for the day and do it, that would be completely capable of doing this kind of thing.
We should go find them.
It's just not that hard.
We can definitely, I mean, we can look at if that is the direction of the board, we will...
The vendors livestreamed all the time.
Look for options.
Sure, let us go take a look, and we'll get back to you. So if we just continue this, item?
I mean, so to, I mean, to the, just to take the other side of the argument, the idea that it's being livestreamed could stifle creativity.
Hello.
Is that what you're trying to say? We've done this before, and no one ever watches, but you never know.
So I think, when we did it in 2019, we did, I believe, a notice, or we have in the past.
But out of notice and...
But all it was is they could attend in person. We did not have recording, streaming.
Right, but nobody came.
Nobody.
Correct.
Uh, we had a couple of people attend in the past.
Ed Music.
We had Ed Music and Mr. Randy Roberts in the past.
That have attended, yeah.
Now, they didn't attend all day, and they didn't attend for both days, but they came in. And, I mean, that's the same thing with board members, that typically come in, participate for a couple hours and leave.
I mean, do we have more than two directors that are available for each of these dates? Are these dates set in stone?
Yes.
Well, we have kind of set them up with Ed, so...
And staff as well.
I mean, I can't, so we have two...
I'm available, I'm available for the October meeting, but not the November meeting. So it's like...
Same thing for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, same, same for me. I'm, I'm good for October, but not for November.
So we don't have three for the November meeting? Do we have two for the November meeting?
I'm open for both.
Okay.
I think I'm open for both.
So the problem is only on the October meeting, right?
So, under AB 361, what you just reauthorized on the consent calendar, you have the opportunity to have virtual meetings. If you decide not to have a virtual meeting, then all board members who want to attend would have to be in the room, and there had to be public access from members of the public to attend in person.
So we can still do that?
Yeah, okay.
That's how we did it before.
You have to stream them.
Why do we have to stream?
Well, AB 361 is an, if you want to shut down all, AB 361 is an option. So if you don't want to have the option, then you can simply say this meeting's not being streamed, it's open to the public, all board members have to be in attendance if they want to be there, and the public has access to be there as well. Do they notice?
That's what we've done in the past.
Do it that way. That's how we've done it. Yeah, we've done that in the past.
That's legal, okay? I'll take it.
Jeff's gonna check on that.
We weren't aware.
We have plenty of time.
We're worried.
No, I think, I, I think you're right.
Yeah, me too.
Well, so, AB 361 is an option for board members to participate virtually.
Right.
So, and you've reauthorized that. So if you're staying for this meeting, it's open to the public, the public can come, and there's public access, and all board members have to be there in person.
Right.
Then you don't have to implement the 361.
Which is old school. That's how we did it before.
So let's just, let's just clarify, all board, when you say all board members have to be there, we're not requiring all five of them to be there?
No, no.
It's just if they want to participate.
Right, right.
They have to be there.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, so let's, let's table 8A, 8A. I think it probably is not needed, right?
We'll continue. So we'll continue to research, and then we'll verify AB 361, and if needed, we will return on September 13th for direction.
And I know that these, I don't remember Ed's technique exactly, but typically, the meetings work in, in, together as a pair.
So there's typically six areas of focus. We do three on the first day and three on the second day.
Right.
We start in the morning with some brainstorming, some...
But some is better than, I'm just thinking about my own participation, some is better than none.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so maybe we have a public meeting on the 4th, and, and we won't need a public meeting on the 3rd, because we'll only have two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know what the difference is, if you just have public, both of them, if you want them to show up.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I get it. All right, 8B. This is approved bids for Adams Street Main Replacement Project. Is this a continuation of the Talavera sort of project?
It is in terms of it's in the same area as Talavera and Sun City. So Adams Street is just the red line right adjacent to Sun City Palm Desert. And so, most of you are familiar with the history in this area. Corrosive soils. Back in 2017, this twenty-four inch pipe had a six-foot rupture near Thirty-Eighth Avenue and it, a wall in Sun City Palm Desert fell down. And as part of the corrosion study we had previously done a few years ago, we identified highly corrosive soils in this area. So this pipeline's a transmission main that goes up to our reservoir, which is to the north. So it feeds this whole area. We have about seventy-seven hundred meters in this area. So it's a priority for us to get this pipe replaced before it fails catastrophically. And in addition, the North Indian flood control project is ongoing right now. So it's a great time to get it in there in the next year or so to replace this pipe. So I'm here today to request the board's approval to solicit bids for this project. So the funding for this project would come out of our PECO reserves. So we're proposing to spend about five million of those reserves this first year. After that, in year two, finance staff has proposed to use our Bank of the West line of credit and then secure long-term funding for not only this project, but for Sun City and Talavera in the subsequent years. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
And taking on this project doesn't delay the others?
It does not.
Does not.
Based on our five-year CIB, it does not.
That five million dollar pay-go, was that, I can't remember, was that put into the budget?
The five million for this project was originally going to be a loan. But based on the discussions that finance has had with the board, there's sufficient reserve PECO funds. And so that's the strategy here is to use that in lieu of getting a loan since we have funding available for this internally.
And does the policy require the board to repay the reserves in a subsequent fiscal year?
So our reserve target, based on the June fourteenth presentation to the board from finance staff, is about forty-six million. So that's the limit established. Our reserve funding that we have currently right now is about fifty-nine million.
So there's adequate reserves without repayment?
Yes.
So this project of five million dollars will not, single-handedly, put us in a position to where we have to raise rates because of it.
Correct. Again, we have fifty-nine million plus.
It's all, it all kind of goes into the same pot.
Your own tape.
It all goes into the same pot, though. I mean, it contributes to, it contributes, it, part of the drawdown of reserves that it might eventually lead to rate increase.
But we have a plan over, that we've been presented to.
I mean, look at the pipes. You've kind of done.
I understand. I understand.
That's really.
That's six foot.
We're going to do the project. It just depends on if we're going to, if we want to pay-go or get a loan for it, so.
Right.
So the first five million would be pay-go. And we work with finance staff and they're comfortable with that.
Yeah, that sounds good. It's an eleven and a half million project.
Okay, that's, we're, okay, I see that. And the five million portion, is that, is a portion of that red line or is it, or is that the five million dollar portion?
That whole red line is about fourteen thousand feet. It's about eleven point five mil overall. So the five mil will pay roughly almost half of that cost. We're going to go out to bid for the entire reach.
Okay.
Five million covers the first year and not the second year.
Right. Sounds reasonable to me. I mean, I'll move approval of, putting that out for bid. Appreciate you guys coming to the board for that. I know that's a new thing.
It is a new thing. We've heard the board's comments.
We don't want to exercise the community.
No, all right, yeah, yeah.
Did you make the motion?
I did.
I'll second that motion.
Before we vote, Director Aguilar, I just want to give you an opportunity to weigh in on this.
I'm ready to proceed, John.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, that passed by all.
Thank you.
Environmental Services, oh, it's my favorite department. You know, we don't have favorites. I always tell my children they're all my favorites, just so you know.
We know the truth.
All right, Zoe, why don't you take over?
Thank you. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. Environmental Services is bringing before you today a request for approval of the water supply assessment and verification for the refuge specific plan. This is a water supply assessment and water supply verification that has been prepared in compliance with Senate Bill 610, 221, and 1262 to serve, since CBWD has been identified as the agency that will be providing domestic service. We worked to prepare this to support any environmental impact review that would come out of this project. So a little bit about the project. It's approximately one hundred and six point four acres that are located in the city of Palm Desert. Gerald Ford is to the north. There's single-family residential to both the east and the south and then the Shadow Ridge Road, Shadow Ridge Golf Course to the west. It has, it actually has seven planning areas and I do want to point out that this was the original planning area map that was updated in the last, in the last round. So the one in the water supply assessment is the correct one, but it doesn't change any of the elements with regards to projected water use. This is, was put here more to show you the location. So with that, I'll move on to the projected water use of the project.
It's incredibly small for what they're doing. That's crazy.
So the project proposes to build nine hundred and sixty-nine single-family and multifamily residential dwelling units, approximately five thousand square feet of amenities. And since this is at the specific plan level, they don't have landscaping plans. So to estimate the outdoor water use, they assume that thirty, there will be thirty-one point ninety-two acres of landscaping, individual home pools, as well as some community pools. So this is very high-level, a specific plan. This is what they're currently projecting that would be a landscaped. So based on this, the indoor water use is estimated to be one hundred and twenty-eight point thirty-four acre-feet per year. Indoor commercial for those amenities, point five four in the combined outdoor use of landscaping pools to be one hundred and seventeen point seventy for a total of two forty-six point fifty-eight acre-feet per year. That's two point three-two acre-feet per acre and it's approximately point five-three percent of our projected increase in water demand by 2045 for domestic, which is approximately forty-six thousand acre-feet. Staff recommendation is that the water supply assessment and verification be approved. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions on the assessment or the project.
These approvals of the water supply assessment and verification last five years?
Correct. They would last five years or until the project is completed. Our current process is we have a list of water supply assessments. We verify the status of each every five years, send out letters. If anything significant has changed in the project, then that's the time that we capture it and evaluate if a new WSA is needed. And if we don't get a response, then the water supply assessment would become void. If the project ever gets revived, they would need to do a new one.
And so then some of the, I know we have the list, that's why I'm bringing it up, of the prior approvals. Some of those did not have expiration dates, as far as I recall. How are we handling those?
At the beginning, there were no expiration dates. If those projects get revived, we are going to handle it one at a time. The first thing, or, you know, on an individual basis, the first thing would be to look at the old assessments, look at the new projects, see if there have been significant changes, and then make a determination. I will point out that a lot of those older assessments used much higher water demand factors than what is currently used. So particularly for those old ones, it would definitely be a recommendation that they be updated and that's what we would communicate to the project proponent.
Okay, yeah. I mean, the two point three-two acre-feet per acre is a very low number for, you know, what looks like a complete community with pools and stuff. Just one other comment. As I understand it, this approval does not establish a water right. It just says that they're meeting the requirements, the state of state law, which is the water supply assessment.
That is correct. The requirement for a water supply assessment and verification, its intent is to bring closer coordination with, between land use planning agencies and agencies providing domestic service. And with 1262 also bringing in, recognizing sigma in basins that have been designated as medium or high priority. So it absolutely, and it states it in the water supply assessment, it does not create a water right. It just provides a documentation to help them in their environmental impact review. In addition to that, as stated in the water supply assessment and verification, this is based on current information. When the project gets built, whatever rules are in place for either indoor use, outdoor use, our own landscape ordinance, any future regulations, they would be subject to those and those would have an impact on the project's overall water use.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, a lot of the ones, the older ones that were approved a long time ago, things like front yard spray irrigation were probably part of their original plans, but state law doesn't allow that anymore, right? So they'll be required to meet the more stringent state requirements.
That is correct. And, you know, Mawa, et cetera, the projects are subject to what's in place at the time that it's constructed.
That's it for me. Any other? Director Aguilar, anything?
Thank you, John. I just wanted to ask Zoe, I don't have any, and probably it's not relevant anyway, any comments regarding the plan itself. But I'm wondering, I'm wondering your thoughts about, and I've talked to you a bit about this before, but I have a concern that the regulations that we are using to form our water assessment strategies are not relevant any longer given this extreme drought condition that we're in despite the ongoing, you know, the ongoing statements that we have plenty of water irregardless of the condition of the drought, which I am slightly not buying. But this development has almost two hundred and fifty pools, which is, I don't know, two and a half million gallons or something like that. You don't have any concerns that this is going to have a long-term impact on our water resource, Zoe?
Director Aguilar, as I, I'll re-point out one thing that I shared during the presentation. Currently, we have planned for domestic growth of forty-six thousand acre-feet by 2045 and this only represents point five-three. So I have no concerns that, as required by the law, that we meet the water needs of the project for twenty years in a single, multiple dry year, that we would be able to meet these requirements or that we would be able to meet these demands.
So the law said we must consider a normal year, a single dry, and multiple dry years over a twenty-year projection?
Correct.
Zoe, I thank you for the presentation. I, you know, the number's small. I agree, you're saying two hundred and forty-six acre-feet per year. The, I guess my, and it's not that big of an issue for me right now, but I get this sense that it's super small. I would think that it's, you know, we always hear, you know, and I know maybe it's not the reality anymore, but we used to hear, you know, one acre-foot of water per dwelling unit a year. And that would put us closer to about a thousand. And so, I'm not saying it should be a thousand, but I would think that it would have been a lot closer. So my thoughts are around trying to understand how we put the projections together. If we used, if we used data from, did we use billing data from similar developments? Are we using what we would hope would be folks' usage, although it might not be that usage? So what is really, how do we come up with these numbers? I see here that we didn't really account for the outdoor demand on the lots. And I think you bulked them all together in this overall category. But I guess I'm just, if you could just answer maybe in a simple way, how we got to this number? What did we reference? What did we use?
Yes, let me cue myself up here. So I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, the one acre-foot per dwelling unit is, at this point, it's much higher. As a back of the envelope, I normally use about a half. Secondly, these are multifamily and single-family for a total of nine hundred and sixty-nine. So with the project being approximately half multifamily, definitely even using a half for those dwelling units is going to be too high. But with that said, for indoor use, we use, you know, those are based on California standards for indoor use. For the amenities, we use AW, best available information, AWWA commercial use. And then for outdoor, for the landscaped, we are using the Mawa or the maximum applied water allowance for outdoor because that's what they're going to be able to use. In addition to that, we calculate the pool separately because right now, for individual, single-family residential pools, those are not part of a calculation. So at the end of the day, they are going to have to meet that outdoor maximum allowed water application number. But we've also, as a buffer, accounted for the use of all the units that they expect to have individual pools as well as the large communal pools. And for that, we are using reference evapotranspiration for that particular zone that the project is going to be built in. So in case the question comes up, we don't, because this is supposed to be annual use, we don't count initial fill, but we do count the amount of replacement water that would need to be put in on an annual basis.
Thank you. And like I said, I know it's such a small number when compared to the number that you said we've been planning for. I think you said like forty-six thousand. So it's a small number. I'm just, you know, I'm just curious to, we could, you know, when we're in the future, if when we plan for, we make these projections and then you actually have them in real life, you know, if they're close together, if they're really off and if perhaps we should just, and if they're really off, if we should be making these projections based on some other methods that get us closer to what is actually going to happen? Because I get that we implement regulations that say you're not going to be allowed to use more than this amount of allowance. And so we have a landscape ordinance that maybe helps them not exceed that. But that doesn't mean that folks aren't going to be allowed to use whatever water they want. They can irrigate as much as they want. They could use, indoor use as much as they want. They can fill up pools as much as they want. So I'm just, from that side of things, I'm trying to understand if, how close we match to that. And I don't know. So it's just something that kind of pops into my head when I look at these numbers is, are we being kind of honest with ourselves as to what the actual use is going to look like? And I say that in a general way. Thank you.
The only comment I have is I like to do the figuring. So we're anticipating two hundred and forty-six acre-feet per year for nine hundred and sixty-nine residents. And if you figure four residents per home, as we do in our water budgeting, that's three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six people. And you do the math and it's fifty-six gallons per day per person.
gallons per day per person. So that's what our plan is, right? That's pretty darn efficient, if you ask me. So if, to your point, Director.
Director Nelson.
Estrada.
Your mind, I'm sorry.
If, if the plan, if the, if the plans are relatively, you know, kind of reality, then it's a pretty dug-on good project, so.
And if I could add one additional element, we've added a section to the plan. I'd like, you know, just to remind everyone that there are regulations in the work that are supposed to actually bring indoor use much lower, and secondly, while I don't have a complete grasp yet of how it's going to affect us locally, there are also in the works new standards for outdoor use. So when these projects actually get built, the expectation is that they'll actually be even more efficient than what we're laying out here, and that's also captured as a line in the water supply assessment verification.
So I thought you were going to do the other math. So it's, it comes out to point two four, I'm sorry, point two five acre feet per unit or four units per acre foot, which is about twice as many units per acre foot as kind of the standard, what people talk about these days, as typical. But it makes sense with the, the thing with the multifamily is you're not really going to have.
Yeah, landscape.
You know, the landscaping and, I don't know what they have, right? And, you know, there might be community amenities, but that, that's going to be a lot less than everyone having their own swimming pool. I'd be curious to come back in, you know, five years after it's built and run the numbers and see.
For sure, yeah. I'm, I'm, I personally, I mean, I know, I, I think I understand the methodology. I think that it's a good number, and they could potentially go below it.
So the board may recall that, I guess it was prior to the pandemic, that's the only way I can kind of look back now and say, was it before the pandemic or after? And, and we did do a review of two recently completed developments when we were looking at changes to the design manual that engineering has and how we were going to change developer fees. And I can't recall the outcome of that, but it has been recent, and it did, it was involved in recalculating a lot of what we do. I, you know, if we need to bring that back to the board for information purposes, happy to do that, but that, to answer Vice President Estrada's question, the staff has looked at that to see how developments have performed based on their plan. And I think, I think it was pretty accurate. I mean, it did reduce some of the standards that we had in the design manual, so.
Right, so a project doesn't put as big a demand on the system as it used to?
Correct.
And I would point to table 5.1, which I didn't include in, I was.
It's in the WSA.
Trying to do a little brief presentation, so there was something to see. We haven't, hadn't done that before for these, but at any rate, I can include additional things. If you look at the target densities, some of the planning areas are going to have 20.6 dwelling units per acre. Planning area two, 10, time to get.
Some page 35 of the water supply.
Yes, page 35. 10 to 18 dwelling units per acre, and even the single family, it's a little bit on, on the higher end, with one planning area having up, almost up to nine homes per, per acre. So it is intended, it's going to be a pretty dense relative to the 969 dwelling units itself, there is going to be a high density, and I think that that impacts the, the overall calculations.
Yeah, even the single-family residential is pretty dense at four to five per acre.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of the WSA.
I'll second.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So, since the, Zoe, since the development and landscape plans are pretty vague at this point, should they, I, I don't know if they would or not, but should they decide to, for example, at a later point, include some sort of a, of a water feature, like a lake or a pond, would that then come back to us?
Certainly, I can, I can answer that question, and Jeffrey can add, if he, if there's additional information that he feels that you need to hear. As the water supply assessment states, if the nature of the project changes significantly or the outlook of our water supplies changes significantly, a new water supply assessment would need to be prepared. When projects go out for environmental review, we do keep an eye on them to see if anything's changing significantly, and then there's an additional step when the project is actually going to get service from CVWD, they would need to bring in detailed landscaping plans. So there, there's both the obligation of the developer, the obligation of the lead agency, which is, in this case, the city of Palm Desert, as well as our own oversight, and then the process of actually entitling the project that allows us to look at whether the landscape or the project itself has changed significantly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Hi.
Vice President Estrada.
Hi.
Director Bianco.
Hi.
Director Aguilar.
Hi.
And Director Nelson.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dee, Luis.
I thought this was your favorite department.
No.
This is my favorite.
No, I'm a bit of a tinkerer, but it doesn't make it my favorite department.
You know, I was telling my granddaughter that she was my favorite granddaughter, and the other granddaughter heard, and she says, you always tell me that. Life's tough.
Hey, Luis, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, President Powell, members of the board. My name is Luis Maciel. I'm the director of IT. I'm here today to request authorization to procure a service storage hardware for the Palm Desert data center in the amount of $321,000, 489, I'm sorry, 321,489. We are replacing an 10-year-old storage area network that is rich end of life, and last year we replaced the one here in Coachella. These two systems replicate to each other for redundancies, and it's primarily used to store data that is, it doesn't make sense to keep in the cloud because it's very expensive, like sewage videos, aerial photography, imagery that we have, CAT staff, the virtual environments, internal databases, so it's a very critical system. I can read the entire BI if you have additional questions.
So it's cheaper to store these video files onsite and have redundant storage than it is to put it in the cloud?
Yeah, first, in, in this case, it is, because we have so much. And we also have the historical records for FileNet. We have over 10 million records now.
Right now, we have 20.
20, but, you know, we're going to, and so there's a lot of data that would be more expensive to keep in the cloud. It's getting cheaper, but we also, we're also mindful about being able to get that data during an emergency, like the CAT stuff, CAT files, electronic records. And we also have to, as we migrate more to the cloud, you know, we still have to keep some level of functionality internally, because there are cases where, you know, with, even though we have redundant internet, we've lost internet in the valley, and so we still have to be able to provide the service.
I agree. Good.
And, and we are looking at more affordable systems, obviously. You know, back in the day, we used to look at the more state-of-the-art equipment. Now, we just, you know, we, with the replication, we guarantee that redundancy, and so we don't necessarily have to buy $800,000 systems.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comment, Director Aguilar?
I'm good, John.
Yeah. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Hi.
Vice President Estrada.
Hi.
Director Bianco.
Hi.
Director Aguilar.
Hi.
And Director Nelson.
Hi.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thanks, Luis. Written communications, there's.
We've had a lot of revision, so I handed out, I distributed, you should have it on your calendar. That's the most recent as of this morning.
So I have a question for staff.
Okay.
I, I've read all of these communications, and I want to know, do we have, and I know Scott's, I don't see him.
I think Stephen might be able to answer some.
Do we, I have two questions for you. I want to know, do we have water waste for patrols?
Oh, that might be a Jenna question.
She's right next to the thing.
And if we do, what's the status of that? And also, I want to know, are we sending letters like the, the lady, I believe most recently, I think it was Penny, described of a nasty letter for a sprinkler head that was.
I think that was Mark.
Webster, that was Webster.
I'd say, we've had so many, to remember the names. So yes, the part of the stage two is increased water waste patrols. So the meter readers are really a proactive effort. When they see something out there, they're sending work orders to my staff. So because of that, we don't really have the time to go out there and just drive around and look for things, but we are getting more reports from the public, so we're addressing those. So really, we're just more responsive than we are proactive, but we are out there when my staff sees a thing, we're, you know, reporting it more. But as far as the letter, so it's a standard letter that has very cut and dry legal language that just says, this is our process, we observed this type of water waste that violates our policies, and if it's not repaired within, and then the timeframe, you can receive fines up to $2,000, and then there's a little bit of blurb about the drought. And so it's a very standard letter, all of our water waste citations, no matter what it is, get that exact letter, just to keep it consistent.
So is there, is there a way to distinguish somebody who, who has a major problem from somebody who has a sprinkler head that maybe, you know, so that we can, I mean, I understand the homeowner's, you know, feeling, that they feel like they're maybe being picked on or, or like a criminal. Maybe the wording, maybe there needs to be two, two sorts of letters, one for somebody who's doing this and one for someone who's doing this, this, or, or may have a problem with a sprinkler head that, that maybe, I mean, that, that happens.
So if it's a, a more serious issue, we'll typically try to call the customer and let them know, just to mitigate the bill, and then they impact a customer service on the backend if I need to redo the bill. So if it's a severe one, we will also call them.
So I mean, I almost think you should do the opposite, that if it's a, if it's a minor, that we should be giving a call, and that if it's a major, we should be giving a call and a letter.
So the board understands that we do have staffing limitations, and this is a pretty important initiative to move on. I appreciate the concern that some of our ratepayers have, that they are being singled out, but we also have customers who, when they get these letters, don't do anything, and then we have to send them another letter. So we are trying to educate, at least inform first and then educate, and certainly, if they ask us to come out and look at something, we're, we'll schedule them and we'll go out as soon as we can, but we, we have a very large area, over 110,000 accounts, and there's, there's just only so much time in a day, unfortunately.
I understand, but, you know, if that is true, what, what was described from Mark Webster in, in that, that's kind of disturbing.
Could we, could we, can you circulate the, the standard letters?
Sure.
I don't think I've seen it.
Yeah, I think the problem is we receive more small issues than we do big issues, so it's easier to call about the big issues because of the staffing limitations.
Well, maybe there should be two different letters for, for big and small. I mean, you, you know, this is, if, if this is our standard procedure and this is going to happen, it sounds like more frequently because of the drought, then we should get ahead of it before, before this is.
And I'll say, I, I've had many people to tell me that they're really grateful to CVWD staff for helping them figure out their leads.
Lots of people, yes.
I mean, this is unusual for a public agency to have that positive response from the public. I don't see it so much as a police force, as some, as just, we're trying to work together to preserve a resource. Do we have data on fines, I mean, for, for water waste fines?
Yeah, we just did a PR, I think Sylvia just responded to a PRA from Associated Press or, or someone.
I mean, how, do, can you give us a sense of how many fines?
I'm trying to remember what it was. I think January through June, it was, I'm trying to remember, we just went with it together, and I've already forgotten.
So this was post-pandemic.
Yeah. With 18, as I said, I thought it was about 20 letters we sent out. Most of them, I think, were $50 fines. We do have a couple $2,000 fines. I forget what the total amount was on that.
I know, I know there are some people that want to use the water and they're going to do it regardless, right?
Yeah, we don't have any stats yet on the drought penalties because they don't go into place until next month. So that'll be a whole different reporting we can do.
And Los Virginas, they're shutting off the Kardashians, they're putting, putting that little, did you see?
That little one.
Flow restrictors, yeah.
Hole in the middle.
Flow restrictors.
You turn on the shower and it probably just drips.
We haven't done that yet.
No.
But we do have, and again, I think I've mentioned this more.
That's really severe.
Yeah. We do have about 200 accounts that are habitually in the tier five, and we have tried to work with them individually and gotten very little success.
There are some people that will use the water regardless of, of the consequence.
Yeah, we, I mean, we called people in tier five that are in there for three months, we call them, they've received no response, month after month after month.
And a lot of those people don't even live here. It's their fifth house, and somebody's taking care of it, and it's, looks like.
They'd rather keep it green and keep it efficient.
Looks like you're in Bora Bora, yeah.
There you go.
I've never been to Bora Bora.
Haven't either.
Well, there's some homes out.
Yeah, no, we're not, and we, we haven't talked about that, but, you know, I mean, there are other, it's being publicized now pretty nationally.
Correct.
That they're like, what Los Virginas is doing. I mean, they're, they're basically saying you can't use the water.
Correct, yeah, there's several agencies that have that.
Because they don't have the water, because they don't have the water, yeah.
It's a different situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, with this discussion, it kind of begs the question is, is, you know, the, I think the, the communication with the board on these issues should, should probably increase, and we get more kind of a summary of how many letters sent out and, you know, those sorts of things. And I know, I know you're, you're all tracking it and responding to AP requests, so if it's some kind of section in the.
The GM report, we actually have a, a table that shows how many investigation citations. It doesn't have the dollar amounts, we can always add that if that's.
Probably the last page, which is.
Yeah.
We have the last thing that's in ours.
That's a big report. I will go there, so thanks for pointing it out. I mean, I, I kind of go to my, my go-to things there.
You know, recognizing that our customers are generally all, are, for the most part, good citizens, and there's going to be a few that are going to use the water no matter what. If we didn't ever find anybody, I think it would indicate there's something wrong with our program. You know, there, I mean, there, there are times when a fine is appropriate.
I, I agree. That's not what I was trying to say. What I was trying to say is that, that there, that the letter that went out to, to, to that homeowner probably was, shouldn't have been that severe, shouldn't have been that severe. I mean, it could lead to that, but the wording maybe was.
We'll get a copy of the letter.
Yes, that's all right. So yeah, between January and June of this year, there was 18 citations that went out, totaling $5,200. So it's across that six-month period.
I'm really pleased to hear that none of the directors have received the letter.
That's why we had to request a copy. They had mailed one to me. I'm still into it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll make sure, and that is, I don't remember what page it is, but it's towards, we are towards the end of the GM report.
So just for the other board members, in the GM report for the month of July, we had 184 water waste investigations, we had 45 customer complaints, we had 173 formal warnings issued, and 13 penalties issued. I don't have any detail on that, but that's, that's a summary of what's included in the last page. And you've got the July general managers' report.
Yeah.
And this is page 151, 151. So yeah, we can look at two different letters. I, I think that's probably appropriate.
Yeah, I, you know, with a, I, I probably agree, I just haven't seen the letter.
Again, the intent is to inform first and penalize as a. Again, the intent is to inform first and penalize as a last step. But inevitably, there are folks that we just can't get their attention. And sometimes it's the penalty that, that does help us turn that corner.
Look how responsive you are, we, we asked the question and here's the, here's the data right here.
But the dollar figures aren't on it.
No.
Good. Right, all right, so that's just informational item, thanks Jenna. And Steve. Board general comments, Director Aguilar.
Mr. President, I just received a message from Director Aguilar that he had to head out, so he has been offline for four minutes.
All right, understood. Director Nelson.
Thanks, John, yeah, probably I'll, I'll include a few more comments under my board general comments rather than reporting on a lot of the individual meetings that have the same topic and kind of go over...
What that topic is.
Repeatedly, yeah. As many of you are aware, that the, the US Bureau of Reclamation came out with their August 16 24-month study, which shows the dire conditions on the Colorado River and sets the stage to set the annual operating plan for 2023, which will come about, obviously, January 1. In that, in that report, there were a lot of figures that I, that I won't get into, but it, the nuts and bolts of it is, it puts the lower basin in a tier-two shortage, tier-two A shortage, which did not require any California contributions to Lake Mead through the 2019 DCP, but did require an additional 100,000 acre foot split between Arizona and Nevada and, and Mexico. So as you can imagine, there was a, a lot of concern that California wasn't participating in any support to the protection levels at Lake Mead or Lake Powell. And there were a number of articles through Politico and CNN, Arizona Republic, Tucson Times and Desert Sun, LA Times, all talking quite a bit about, you know, California's lack of participation. And I just want to assure you, in my role as the Chair of the Colorado River Board, that there are a lot of conversations happening. And, you know, Robert's participating, Jim's participating, Steve's participating. And there is a lot of work going on in trying to come up with volumes from California to the protection levels for the lakes. No one wants to see the system crash and, and it's very dry out there. But with that being said, is, yeah, Arizona did, you know, talk about a concept in terms of California, Arizona taking cuts in 2023. California didn't really agree with that concept and presented its own concept. And so we're still working on those. So there is a lot of work being done to, on a couple different fronts within California. One is to come up with, trying to utilize the IRA or the Inflation Reduction Act that provided, that will provide $4.1 billion worth of drought, specifically target, drought relief specifically targeted to the Colorado River system. And I know that Senator Kelly had a, of Arizona, had a article, you know, claiming that, you know, this, this may be all for Arizona. And, but I, I, I think the thing is, is, is that Feinstein and Padilla's office did some equal work on that bill, specifically after the CRB had reached out to them to write some of the language and, and get it in the act. So yes, Arizona participated, but California did as well, Nevada did as well. And so it, and I believe the Upper Basin had input on it too. So, you know, it, it was obviously passed and now signed by the President. So we'll see how that shakes out and how some of that money is utilized. Yesterday, or this last week, Secretary Holland, Commissioner Tooten, Assistant Secretary Trujillo toured Southern California and, and were giving out Water Smart Project grants, which about $310 million of that, not giving out, but kind of announcing. So out of the $310 million, 12 million was given to Coachella Valley Water District, so for a great project.
Which is a grant.
Right, and, and I, I think that's fantastic. The one thing though, is a lot of these projects, kind of shovel-ready projects, ready to go, districts doing them anyway. Great support for water-efficient programs. But, you know, that, in, in both basins, the Upper Basin and Lower Basin, is we have to do more. And so, you know, I'm very hopeful that that IRA Act can be utilized effectively in there. And so, and so the, the beat goes on and we keep working. There is a meeting, actually, kind of concentrated for the Lower Basin. It just happens to be in Salt Lake City on Friday. So continue working with Arizona on, on these issues. So it's, it's a work in progress and, and I think we're all committed to, I, I know we're all committed in the Lower Basin to coming up with some kind of solution. And, and yeah, we need to respect the 68 Act, the law of the river in terms of PPRs and pre-68 rights. But at the same time, there is a, a real need to, you know, protect the system as well, so. Those, that kind of sums up what I'll report on, on my meetings, but a lot of work going on.
Thank you for the work you're doing on that. You're just getting started, I know, but...
Yeah, then, then once you get this, I mean, we've been trying to get to the discussions on the 2026 guidelines and it just keeps getting, you know, hijacked by what the current situation is. And, you know, hey, this will inform a lot of what we do for 2026, which the pre-scoping, the Bureau of Reclamation put into the Federal Register, the pre-scoping notice for those 2026 guidelines, and so comments are being made. I know CRB has prepared some comments and I think individual agencies and states are doing the same thing, so. As well as everyone interested in the Colorado. So we'll, we'll hear all about it and figure out how to move forward with that process as soon as we get maybe a process set up for next year, so.
Good, thank you. Director Bianco?
No comments.
Vice President Estrada?
Just one quick comment. We are going to have a, a follow-up meeting tomorrow with staff as part of a roundtable group that was created between the EPA, BIA, USDA, the county, yeah, some elected offices here locally that are looking to continue to coordinate to resolve some of the issues in the, in the east, eastern parts of the Coachella Valley related to water quality issues, a lot of the EPA systems that are out of compliance with arsenic issues and just a, a host of issues that I think have some sort of relevance to perhaps the lack of infrastructure in that area. So this is a follow-up meeting to, to that meeting that we had first, I think it was back in April, maybe, May. And so it looks like we're having a follow-up meeting tomorrow in the morning. There's two sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, but the afternoon's more for the public. The morning session is, is more of a, of a closed meeting for the public agencies. And we have some updates to present. Carrie's going to be making a presentation and it sounds like we've been working directly with them for, for a few months now since that meeting. And so there's progress that hopefully is, is being made. And so we're, we're going to be there tomorrow to follow up. And this is at the Torres Martinez gym. And, yeah. That's it for me.
Thank you. I think I'll pass on comments today, said enough. Do we, are we aware of any board requests for future agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Nor am I. Let's do meetings then, Director Estrada, the first two.
Yeah, this, um, there was, this was a, a pre, I call it a pre-meeting to the, the June 30th meeting that I believe I had, I probably already reported on. But this was the meeting that we had with Bureau of Reclamation, with the Department of Interior. This is when we met, where you usually have your, your, your Colorado River Board meetings. And I think you were there all day, also participated with that meeting with the SSA. And we, we were there with, well, that was a pre-meeting to, to the actual meeting on June 30th. So, so that was a meeting with, with, with the SSA to prepare for our comments for that June 30th meeting.
With Wade and...
Yes. And then the, the, um, I, I don't know if this is... So thi, this was a bit confusing to me, the June 30th, just because I believe our actual meeting with USDA was on the 30th. So if this was a pre-meeting, it must have been on the 29th. So, but it would have just been a, a pre-meeting in, in preparation for the meeting, which I imagine I've already reported on, which was the actual meeting on the 30th. Because I believe it was on the exact same day that we, when I left the USDA meeting, we had, we had a press conference with Congressman Reese and we actually hosted the, 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 was it the direct, the USDA Rural Development? It was the Undersecretary for, for USDA, yes, so Sochi Torres. We hosted Sochi Torres, who's the Undersecretary for USDA Rural Development. And she paid a visit to, to our area. And so we gave her an update, much like we're going to give an update tomorrow. And so if I had a pre-meeting, it was a pre-meeting for that. But I imagine I must have reported on the actual meeting. But I'm reporting on both, so there.
Multiple activities on the 29th and 30th.
Yes.
Thank you. July 12, Seaville meeting, Director Nelson.
Yeah, so that's the Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Club and...
Coalition.
And, you know, under the Regional Water Quality Control Board regulations is everyone must be reporting best practices and so forth. So that, that meeting, I think, I remember more the most recent one, but we talked at a lot of administration, a lot of talk about memberships and what we're going to do with the fish sampling and costs. So as you know, agriculture is required to report to the, and have a plan under the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So that's, I'm on that board, John's on that board.
I actually attended that also, I didn't report on it because it wasn't on the list last time and I had, I had already gotten a different meeting that day.
I think there was a lot of meetings that day. The next one is the Imperial County Water Advisory Committee meeting. That is a, you can attend in person or on Zoom, I attended by Zoom. It's very informative to hear kind of growers speak in Imperial Valley, what's going on with the river situation and kind of figure out then who to talk to and have communications with. So that was, that's about a two-hour meeting. The next one, July 26, was a California caucus check-in. So that's the Section Five Contractors get together and figure out strategy in working with Arizona and what individual contractors' priorities are.
Good. That Gulf and Water, I, they did not have a Zoom option and I was out of town, so I did not attend that.
I think we had some technical difficulties that day.
They didn't set up Zoom.
I don't think I did.
For the Gulf and Water, it said right on the agenda, there was no...
No Zoom, but we have a telephone.
No Zoom, oh, they had a phone.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what that meant?
Yeah.
I took the no as, don't bother, so. I didn't, I didn't bother. Anyways, I wasn't there. Back to the 28th, Peter?
Okay, yeah, the 28th, that was a Zoom call that included the state, California DWR, the California Natural Resources Agency, which Secretary Crowfoot headed up this meeting and had a local Salt and Sea Authority on the meeting as well as County, Imperial and Riverside County, an update on what the potential impacts to the Salt and Sea would be in terms of reduced water inflows. Really thinking in terms of a range of inflows of 250,000 to 350,000 of inflow reduction to the sea and what kind of playa that might expose and what this, how the state may or may not mitigate that as well as an update on the partnership with the US Bureau of Reclamation. And so that was a, a well-attended meeting.
Where are we, legis... Oh, that was, well, Director Estrada, July 28.
Yeah, that was our, our recurring legislative committee meeting. We had a, in particular, what was different about that meeting? We had a, a presentation by Leadership Council on Senate Bill 222, which is something that we are, that we are looking at, perhaps even supporting at, at a particular point when it makes sense. But we wanted to know more about it and we requested that Leadership Council, who is a co-author and has been working very close with the legislation and the Governor's Office, come in to, to kind of give us more of a sense of what the goals are of the bill and, and how it would work and, and even a chance for us to express some of the concerns that, that, that we might have with, with, with the bill. The bill is, is a statewide low-income water rate assistance program. And it's really kind of structured to be similar to other assistance, assistance programs. I think they exist on the energy side. And so they're, they're looking to, to do the same for water. It sounds like there is a lot of support for the bill, both in the legislation and by the Governor's Office. The Governor's Office actually is working directly with the bill authors because he has some things that he wants to tweak where, I think in particular, he wants to make sure that the program is housed under the State Water Research Control Board, where before it was being placed in some community, community district, which I think handles the, the assistance program for, for energy. So it does seem like this is something that's going to pass. We just want to make sure that if it, if it's something that's going to happen, that it, that it's not overly kind of burdensome from an administrative point for agencies so that they can take advantage of it. And we kind of said, look, we participate in the re, the, what is, what is that word called? Rea, rea, that's a hard word for me.
I know, I know.
The rea-regis, the, the...
I'm not sure what...
Where we got like 250,000...
Oh, the rea-rid.
A rea-ridge.
A rea-ridge. A rea-ridge, yeah.
Yeah, that's a hard word. Yeah, that's a hard word.
That is a hard one.
Yeah, they say that.
A rea-ridge.
Even the word's difficult, so uh, anyway, so you know, we kind of pointed to that program as kind of being something that, that wasn't hard for us to, to roll out to our customers. Um, we kind of pointed to the fact that we use United Way uh to handle a, a program that I think does something similar, provide, provide support. And so we were just saying, hey, look, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. There's, you know, this is done, this has been done before and, and we're happy to participate. It's just, i- it can be extremely difficult. So, so that was the, most of the conversation, I think, for that uh, for that meeting. And then we had um, an update on, on other bills, which uh, if you go to the, the, the agenda, you'll find the, the packet for that. But, but this was the, the thing that we talked about the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. What is next? Sorry. Oh, seven basin states.
Okay, uh, we're July twenty-ninth, seven basin states. That was a Zoom, uh, a Zoom uh meeting. Um, ju- getting prepared for the August sixteenth uh rollout of the twenty-four-month study and getting the state's perspectives on uh what expectations might be and where the Bureau was headed, uh, which we heard um, that we're headed. Um, I'll report on that later.
Okay. Um, August fifth, we had a principals' meeting on the um tribal lawsuit mediation. And um, it's nice to see everyone there. We had the new tribal chair, uh Reed Milanovich, and vice chair Vince Gonzalez, along with DWA's president and vice president and two of us.
Great.
At their tribal administration center. I'd never been there. It's a nice place.
Yeah, they have some money.
Okay. We don't need to say anymore about that. August ninth, um, meeting with Desert Concepts on well forty-five twenty-nine.
Yeah, that was a, that was just an update uh on a project that uh we, we've been working on and has had some issues. And so I think that's scheduled to come at a certain point, perhaps to the rest of the board. So I'll, I'll just say that it was uh, it was a meeting for, for an update on, on the project.
Okay.
Thank you.
CRB?
So the August tenth CRB meeting was canceled?
That's right. Um, August fifteenth, uh DVBA Director Meeting. And uh, it was pretty standard fare going over the numbers and the organization. Nothing too exciting.
And that's what, uh, John, just uh to clarify, I think a number of us have this letter. And this is the national organization then that the DVBA have, uh, has uh
Yeah.
kind of associating themselves with.
Yeah, they're now a member of the NHB, which makes them recognized as the sort of the housing. Oh, yeah, I hadn't seen that.
Okay, great.
The housing uh agency of the, the building industry representative of the.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Yeah. Which was a big deal for them. Um, it's, seems like a very good organization, the NHB.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, August twenty-second, California Farm Water Coalition.
Yeah, that meeting was yesterday via Zoom. Um, w- we had a lot of good uh information about uh what uh, what, what Mike is up to in the, in the community. He did a San Diego uh, uh opinion piece about farming um, in the Colorado River Basin, which I thought was factual and uh important. Um, he, and then um, uh, we did a uh, I did a uh presentation on the Colorado River update, much just like I talked here, probably a little, a little more in-depth about the sixty-eight act and the law of the river and things like that. But uh, it was uh very good to then get the perspective of uh, the president of the uh, Glen Calusa Water District, who is um, uh, a, a part of the Sacramento River Exchange Contractors, who uh went through very similar situations in Northern California uh recently and have developed a two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirty-eight um conservation program.
Voluntary agreements.
Voluntary agreements that are producing up to eighty-thousand acre feet of water on an annual basis with a payment schedule from uh, from uh, uh buyers, including Bureau of Reclamation, uh, including urbans and including um, uh, oh, uh, I'm missing it. Oh, wildlife, wildlife refuges. And so uh, it was a very interesting conversation and we have some follow-up talks going there. So it was a good meeting.
Great. Others will throw the, put the Seaville of the sixteenth meeting, similar to the prior one, but uh, say they had met with, our staff had met with, Seaville staff had met with regional board uh staff earlier that day, trying to get some progress on an alternative to the fish tissue requirement that's in the order. Uh, and they're continuing to work on that, trying to get it changed, which they've been working on for a long time. Not getting very far.
Yeah, I, I, I attended that meeting as well. And really what's happening is they're trying to follow, uh, they're trying to follow uh contaminants in the whitewater channel up, up the chain. So from, from the most basic organisms up to a level four fish and, which is a predatory fish that eats other fish. So they're trying to, so you have to take a fish sample. Well, there are no, there are very few of those fish in, in the channel, for one. And then uh, when you go and try and collect those fish, you, you may have incidental takes of pupfish and, which is a protected species. So uh, the regional board requires it, but then you can't get a permit to go sample the fish because you might uh disturb the pupfish. So it's just this circular bureaucracy that is just the most ridiculous thing you ever, you ever dealt with. And that, and that, and the regional board, well, not the most ridiculous. I can think of other ridiculous things that uh, Mr. Bigley deals with, but.
Yeah. Where it gets weird is they say, well, our hands are tied, it's in the order. And it's like, yeah, but we tried to get it.
We tried to not put it in the order and you resisted that, right? So it's just this big circular thing and uh, um, I mean, discussions about, well, should we just not do anything and let them write us up?
I don't think you can do anything.
Yeah, so.
We're just trying to appeal to their sense of reason.
It was a, yeah, it was a.
Steve Bigley deals with those guys all the time.
Yeah.
Bigley, can you put some bait out there, just for, you know, throw your fishing pole and uh, don't catch any pupfish.
Maybe we should go ask that tour operator that does fishing tours on the whitewater and see, see what they, what kind of fish they're catching.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Any other meetings?
I have a few, Mr. Chairman, um, that uh, I think I've pretty much reported on. Um, but on um, uh, let's see, I'm sorry. Um, on, I, I was just looking through my calendar on, I don't know if I reported or not, but on July thirteenth, uh, there was a CRB California Caucus on next steps and how to, how to move the discussion um to the next steps. That was on uh, July thirteenth. Then on uh, um, August first, there was a California Caucus, um, just California agencies on Zoom. Uh, and I believe some of our staff attended that meeting. Um, and then on uh, eight August second, there was a Colorado River two thousand and three annual operating uh plan review, going over the um verbiage of how the operating plan would be read. Uh, normally there are three of those. I believe this was number two. Uh, and it was determined that we would need uh, an additional meeting, four meetings this year because of the lack of progress on a, on a plan. So um, so at least uh, you know, we got another meeting out of the meeting. It's horrible. So um, then on, on August fifth, we had a federal, state, local, salt and sea uh virtual meeting, uh, which we again talked about uh, impacts to any California um, progress on water conservation uh for the year twenty-twenty-three. Um, and then on August ninth, we had a federal, California and Arizona-specific discussions about um, trying to coordinate the concepts between the two states, uh, which uh, uh, we did make uh some progress. Uh, and, and which led up to uh, August tenth and eleventh, where we met in Denver, um, where all the progress that we had made just evaporated. Um, so that was on August tenth and eleventh in Denver uh with the feds and the, and the seven basin states, where we meet uh with the seven basin states, discuss priorities, and then we split out between lower and upper basin. Um, and then on the uh, twelfth, uh, which was Monday, the twelfth, we were able to update, Chris and I, um, the, actually, um, yeah, Chris, Chris's Zoom wasn't working very well, but that, in any case, I updated the California Natural Resources Association in California, DWR, Arturo and Tom Gibson were on the line, as well as Carla Nemeth and Wade Crowfoot, and giving them a sense of what happened in Denver and um, what California's positions are in, in the discussion. So keeping them up to date and in the loop as they have their own discussions with the Bureau um, regarding salt and sea issues and so forth. So this was kind of primarily for that. Uh, on eight fifteen, the Section Five California uh parties got together right before the, the um, uh, August twenty-four month study uh, uh, to discuss, you know, what, what, what would come of that, how we might respond. Um, um, and so that, that was a good meeting. And then um, on the sixteenth, we talked about that, so the Seaville. So those are, I've been, I've been pretty active in, in these meetings. And um, you know, Jim's on a few of these, Robert's on a few of these, and, and Steve as well, so.
Okay, any other?
That's it.
Meetings to report on? Could I have a motion to approve per diem for those meetings reported on?
I'll make a motion.
All second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass four-oh with one ampson. General Manager?
Yes, sir, just the COVID stuff, having personally gone through it um, and survived. Uh, we've had three hundred and thirty-eight recovered qualifying cases, unfortunately, two mortalities. We've got four folks off work right now. Uh, and then on vaccination status, eighty-seven percent of the staff has provided proof of vaccination. And that's all I've got, sir.
Eighty-seven percent?
Eighty-seven percent.
Wow.
Four hundred and sixty-four out of currently five hundred and thirty-two on board.
Counsel comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, on the topic of AB three-sixty-one virtual meetings, I just wanted to give an update on AB two-four-four-nine. Not been adopted yet, but it changes uh on a regular basis and was most recently amended on the eighth of August. This would allow, outside of a state of emergency, outside of AB three-sixty-one, for there to be virtual meetings uh for board members to attend virtually. But it would be, it'd be very limited. It would be limited to cases where there's quote-unquote just cause or an emergency. And you could only use the just causes uh reasoning twice per calendar year. An emergency would mean a physical or family emerg- medical emergency that prevents a member from attending. Just cause would mean a childcare or caregiving need, uh, a contagious illness, a need related to a physical or mental disability, travel while unofficial business of a legislative body. But again, either just cause can only be used twice in a year. So we'll see where that goes and um, that's all I have today.
Is there a penalty if you use it more than twice?
Yes. And there's a whole process of getting it approved. It's not just you use just cause, it has to come before the bore, the bore has to decide. I'm gonna, I didn't want to worry about all those details.
We'll turn off their microphone.
Censure.
Any, any department reports today?
No, but I feel, I feel somewhat happy that a lot of the staff has remained to this point in the meeting.
Amazing. So we, at this time, we'll adjourn to closed session uh, to consider the items listed on the agenda. We will reconvene and report uh, of closed session when we finish that.
Nine forty-five.
Regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We don't have any reportable action from closed session and with no further business, we're adjourned.